Alright, here we go. Okay, so take a look at the top. It says a definite integral. Okay, remember that gives you the exact directional what? Between a function and the x-axis on the interval, what is the integral measure? There's then an area, very good. Now, remember typically if you have the equation, and it's not like a geometric shape, then you would just type it into the calculator. So typically, you're gonna use Riemann sums when you're doing discrete data. Okay, so this is usually gonna be used for tables without an equation. Yeah, because like I said, if you have the equation, you can just type the integral into the calculator and then you can just get the answer. Okay, so draw for me a function that is increasing and then draw a function that is decreasing. So we're gonna do increasing, increasing, and then decreasing, decreasing, decreasing. And then we're just gonna sketch each of the types, just so that we can kind of remember which one's over, which one's up. We really just for fun. Okay, so then take your area, splice it up. I'm gonna do four pieces, so I'm gonna cut it in half. And then I'm gonna cut each of those in half. So I'm gonna have a total of four pieces. Then I'm gonna cut it in half. Then I'm gonna cut each of those sides. And I'm gonna do that for the top one. Okay, if you use a left Riemann sum, you're gonna start with the very first y-value, which would be right here. And then you would cut across and then use this point to cut across and then use this point to cut across and then use this point to cut across. If your function is increasing, how do those areas compare with the actual area under the graph? They would be an underestimate for the actual area. So I'm gonna put here that would be an underestimate for the actual. Now go to your second graph, this time we're gonna start on the right side. We're doing a right Riemann sum. So I'm gonna start here on the farthest to the right y-value that I can find. And I'm gonna cut across, 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 across. And then I'm gonna shade in those here. Hey, how did those areas compare? Underestimate or over? Okay, that's an overestimate. And then I'm not gonna write out for the actual area, this is very rough one. Okay, so if it's an increasing function, our left would cut under, our right would cut over, let's talk about our midpoint. Remember for the midpoint, you would identify the center y-value for each sub-intervall. So like say I was going here to here. This is my center x-value and then I would use that to cut across. And so remember you have to skip one when you do a midpoint. So you would say like, oh, let me do the one in the middle, cut across. Then I would take this ones in the middle, cut across. And then what would we say about our estimate of this one? Over, under, or not sure? Okay, you can't tell, and the reason why is because you end up with a little bit too much over here, but then a little bit too little over here. Typically, those kind of cancel out to make this the most accurate. So I'm gonna put more half. Not sure. About over. Alright, then for our decreasing graphs, we're gonna do the exact same thing. Okay, but spoiler alert, the relationships are just the opposite. Okay, if your function is decreasing, then when you slice it up in half and then each of those in half, your left Riemann sum isn't under anymore because it starts at the highest point, so the left is getting cut across. So I would end up using the left and then I would go across. First, if I were to do the right side, you'd see again the exact opposite. Cut it in half, cut each of those in half. But then you're gonna start with the right side and you're gonna cut across. Now, does it make a difference for your midpoint? Not really. Okay, so I'm gonna do two extra wide sub-intervals here and then I'm gonna let the center y-value determine the height. And then I'm gonna let the center y-value determine the height. So remember for a midpoint, doesn't really matter what the function's doing, you would end up being basically. So this was an overestimate. This was an underestimate. And then this one is still more accurate. Okay, then two other little details let's put in. When you're doing a chart for a left Riemann sum, which y-value would never get used? For a left Riemann sum, for both of these, which y-value never gets used? The top one, which would be the last one. Okay, and then what about down here? Again, the last one never gets picked. So remember, if it were a chart, you skip the last y-value if it's a left. What about if it's a right Riemann sum? Then who never got to pick the height of a rectangle? Like the first one. So here, this guy never got to determine the height of a rectangle because it came first. And I was always picking the right-hand side, so it never got skipped. So this one, we would skip the first y-value. Okay, and then for a midpoint, remember that typically you're skipping a point between so that it can be the middle. So I'm gonna do three of the third one. And we'll look at examples of those. Okay. Alright, so while I did say usually you would just use this for tables without an equation, every now and then they'll put it on the AP test with an equation. So let's take a look at this question at the bottom. Okay, so first thing it says is we're gonna use the function 4 to the x. And it says we're gonna do four sub-intervals of equal length. And we're gonna go from 1 to 3. So remember, the first thing that you should do is find your width. Now, how wide is it from 1 to 3? How many units? If I take 2 units and I divide it into 4 parts, how wide is each part gonna be? 0.5. So think about that one more time. From 1 to 3 is a width of 2, but then I have to divide that into 4 equal parts. So your formula for that, if you don't remember, I'll put it up here, is b minus a divided by n, where n is the number of rectangles that you wanna form. So for example, here, I would say, okay, well then my width is gonna be 3 minus 1 divided into 4 equal parts. And then I would say, oh, 3 minus 1 is 2. 2 divided by 4 is the same as 0.5. No, a sub-interval is like how wide this is. That would be a sub-interval from here. So basically, the sub-interval could be making a rectangle, it could be making a trapezoid. It just depends what type of sub-interval. But it's basically how wide that slot is in the graph. Okay, so let's make a chart here. Where's our chart gonna start? Where does the integral start? 1, and then what are we counting by? Or half, 0.5, it's very good. So I'm gonna do 1, then 1.5, then I'm gonna do 2, then 2.5, and then I'm gonna do 3. And then when I get to 3, yeah, I'm gonna stop because I'm only looking at the integral. Okay, then what type of sub is it gonna be? A left, which means which one's gonna get skipped that I don't really care about. Okay, I'm gonna skip the last one. Let's see, because it's a left side Riemann sum. So I know I don't really need 3, but I have to plug in the other 4. Okay, so let's do them one at a time. So first, we're plugging in 1, what's our function? 4 to the x, so I'm gonna do 4 to the 1. What's 4 to the 1? 4. Okay, next, I'm gonna do 4 to the 2. What's 4 squared? So I know this one's 16. Then for the other 2, I'm gonna have to think about 1.5 and 2.5 in terms of fraction. So what would 4 to the 1 and a half be as a fraction? Give me this as a fraction. 3 halves. So I have 4 to the 3 halves. And then what is, how do I work out the 3 halves? What do I do?
Well, you could square root.
So square root the 4 to get it 2 and then cube it. Okay, so you would just have to think about, okay, 1 and a half, that's 3 halves. That's a power of 3 and a square root. So that's gonna give me 2 to the 3rd is 8. Okay, and then the other one that's a little bit harder is 2.5. What would that be as decimal? So it'd be 4 to the 5 half, which means that I would do the square root of 4 first and then raise it to the fifth. Square root of 4 is still 2, so now let's count up 5. 2 times 2 is 4, times 2 is 8, 16, 32. Okay, then from there, we're ready to set up our integrals. I'll do it down here at the bottom. You're gonna write the integral from 1 to 3 is approximated by 4 to the x is approximated by. And then if your widths are all the same, do you remember you can pull it out to the front? So I'm gonna do that here, what was my width every single time? 0.5. And then remember, I'm just gonna add the y-values starting with the left form. So I had 4, then 8, then 16, and 32. But because it's a left side only, I don't actually care about 4 to the 3rd. And then from there, you shut a little bit. So 4 and 8 is 12. 12 and 16 makes 28. And then 28 plus the 32 would be 15, 16. What's half of 16? That would be. Okay, then another quick question, would this be an over or an under x? Think about what 4 to the x is doing, is it increasing or decreasing? Uh-huh, it's an increasing function and which side did I pick? A left, then look at your chart, it's increasing, I picked a left and it's an under. But remember, you have to look at both features, which side did I pick and which way is it going? Okay? Sure, because remember, if it's a left Riemann sum, then I would say like, okay, from 1 to 1.5, I'm gonna pick the left y-value. And then from 1.5 to 2, I'm gonna pick the left. And then from 2 to 2.5, I'm picking 16 because it's on the left. Then 2.5 to 3, I'd pick 32. The last one never gets picked because it's never on the left side of this slide, you know what I mean? Okay, good on that? Alright, next one. Okay, next one. Um, alright, now we have a chart. Can we do equal sub-intervals or no? Okay, yes, and remember, if they're all the same, you get to do the short version. So let me just remind you here, if it's equal sub-intervals, then you just do the delta x in the front and then you just have the y-value. Okay, so in this case, when I look at my chart, it goes 0.5, 1, 1.5, 2. I see they're all the same, what's the delta x every time? 0.5. Now, if you read the question, okay, let's check this. It doesn't tell us what type to use. It says, we have a table for a continuous function. f is increasing. Which of the following could be the value? So let's do a left, do a right, and then we know that the real answer has to be somewhere between those. Does that make sense? Because if your function's increasing, then a left is gonna be an under x. A right side will be an overestimate, and then we have kind of a window of like the real answer has to be somewhere. Does that make sense? You can do the midpoint and then you'll know which answer it's closest to, but like think about what if the answer came out to like 38? Well, then it's like, oh, do I pick 36 or do I pick 41? So midpoint will get you close to the right answer, but given like how close 50 and 53 are, like what if the midpoint comes out to be 51? And it's like, wow, how do we know, you know? So what I would do is do a left Riemann sum, do a right Riemann sum, and then the right answer will be somewhere. Okay, so let's Riemann sum, which one gets skipped? First or last? Last, the last one gets skipped, so I do 6 plus 14 plus 24 plus 28. Then I have to find that answer, which will be the second. For the second one, I'm gonna do 0.5. And then for a right Riemann sum, what do I skip? The first one, so I'd start with the 14. So I do 14 plus 24 plus 28 plus 34. And this one does say, I tried to mark, this is the calculator problem, so I'm just gonna add 14 up here, even though you could do it without. So we're doing 0.5 times 6 plus 14 plus 24 plus 28. And that comes out to 36. And that's an underestimate because my graph's increasing, so what can we eliminate? A. Okay, and then my second 1, 0.5, 14 plus 24 plus 28 plus 34 comes out to 50. So then I know it can't be 50, then it has to be. So remember that if you have an increasing function, anytime you do a Riemann sum, you're gonna be missing some area or having too much area. It will never be exact, because think about when you slice it, you're always gonna be missing on the right, what about this area that I that I have extra, you know what I mean? Like it has to be in between them, otherwise you're gonna have error. On this estimate, it's gonna be too small. And then on this estimate, it's gonna be too big. Because no matter which side you pick, you're either gonna be too big for a right side or too small for a left. What's the one that's just right? Midpoint. Okay? Alright, then a second one here, we're gonna do a trapezoidal sum. Okay, so remember trapezoidal sum is when you're gonna do 1 half y1 plus y2 times delta x plus. And then you'll move to the second trapezoid, so it would be 1 half y2 plus y3 times delta x. Okay, then your third one, you would put the 1 half from the trapezoid formula, y3 plus y4, and then delta x plus dot dot dot. Okay, that would be your long one if you have unequal sub-intervals. Unequal sub-intervals, what about if you have equal sub-intervals? Yeah, what can I pull out to the front? What are they all having common half and? Delta x, so you do the half and the delta x to the front. And then do you remember that you end up with 3 p? So you have like your y1, but then I end up with y2 twice. And then I end up with y3 twice. So remember that your first one and your last one only get counted once, but all the middle y-values get counted. So I would have y1 plus double y2 plus double y3 plus blah, 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 and then the last one only gets counted. And remember, the reason that happens is because every y-value in the middle gets to be a base for the trapezoid on the left and a base for the trapezoid on the right. Okay, then remember the feature that you care about, doesn't matter increasing or decreasing, all that matters is concavity. Draw a function that's concave up. Draw a function that's concave down. Okay, let's pretend like the real area is what I'm shading here in yellow. That's my real area. Okay, this is my real area. But let's say that I wanted to use trapezoids to estimate that area. Okay, now, to avoid having really annoying graphs, I'm just gonna cut this one in half. I'm not gonna do 4 pieces, I'm just gonna do 2. So cut it in half and then draw your trapezoids. Remember, your trapezoids should have straight lines across the top. So I'm gonna connect here to here and then here to here. And I end up with 2 trapezoids. When my graph is concave up, how do my trapezoids compare? Over or under the real area? Okay, these are an overestimate for the actual area. Okay, but then notice, it didn't matter if you were on the downhill side or the uphill side. They're both over because of concavity if it's a trapezoid. Okay, then what about for your concave down section, how's it gonna come out? Gonna come out under, I'll do that one in 3 pieces, but it's the same thing. And it's all just that it into 3 pieces. And then remember, for a trapezoidal sum, you're connecting the tops with straight lines. So I'd be connecting here, connecting here, connecting. And what do you notice about the error as I go from 2 trapezoids to 3? Yeah, you're, as the more rectangles or the more trapezoids that you do, the less error you're gonna end up with. The more sub-intervals, the less the error. And this would be an under estimate. But remember, the more pieces that you use, hey, the narrower the pieces get and the narrower the error that you're gonna get. Yep. Alright, turn the page when you're ready. Let's take a look at the next question. Alright, so we have another non-calulator here. So it says we're gonna use the function e to the negative x over 2. We're gonna go from negative 4 to 2. And then we're gonna do how many sub-intervals? So the first thing we wanna do is find the width. So I'm gonna do it up here at the top. Width is b minus a over n. My b minus a here would be the width of the whole sub-interval. If I go from negative 4 to 2, how wide is that? 6, because it'd be 2 minus negative 4. But then how many pieces do I need to plug that into? We said 3, so then how wide is each piece gonna be? 2. Okay, then let's make our chart. We're gonna start at what x-value? Negative 4, and what are we gonna count by? 2. So if I add 4 to negative, I'm sorry, if I add 2 to negative 4, what's my next x? Okay, then I add 2 again. Then add 2 again, I'd be at 2. And then we're gonna plug in each of our numbers one at a time to this formula right here. Now, I hate the way that that looks, so I'm gonna change that to 1 half e to the negative x. So we can see, these are the same, and I don't like when you like put it in the front. Okay, so we have 1 half e to the negative x, we're plugging in a negative 4, what are we gonna get for our y-value? Okay, why is it e to the 4 instead of a negative 4? Because the x was negative and then we plugged in another negative, so they cross out. And next one, we're plugging in e to the negative 2, well then that would be 1 half e to the 2. What about if I plug in 1? Okay, 1 half e to the 0. Now, is you 0, 1? But look at your answer choice. Why would they do this? I have no idea. Okay, but if I see you, the zeros in here, then I'm just gonna kind of follow with the. Okay, then for my last one, I'd have 1 half e to the negative x would be negative 2. Okay, now let's set up our sum. We wanna do a trapezoidal approximation. So we're gonna do 1 half in the front, delta x, and then we're gonna add up all the y's, blah, blah, blah. What is our delta x here? How wide? So I'm gonna have 1 half of 2. And now I'm gonna add up each of the 1's. Remember, the first and the last ones only get counted once, but all the middle ones get counted twice. So I'm gonna have 1 half e to the 4, but then I'm gonna have 2 half e squares. And then I'm gonna have 2 half e to the 0, and then I'm gonna have just 1 half e to the negative 2. What's gonna happen on the outside with the half and the 2? Crossed out. And then what I would think to do next would be to cancel out all of these. Look at your answers, though, should we do that? Okay, what did they factor out in both of these answers? I have, and if these already crossed out, and this is my answer, well then all of those have a half, then I wanna try to follow that same form. So I'm gonna GCF this half to the front. So if I do my half to the front now, then what am I left if I have? 4 plus 2, either the 2's 2, either the 2's, 2, either the 0's, and then 1, either the 2. Okay, so just make sure as you're going through it, especially for the multiple choice, once you collapse all these middle terms, then it's kind of like, wait, my answer doesn't look like it. You just wanna be kind of careful. That's a great question, you would have to see the graph. The only reason we knew the other one is because we had to just check if it was increasing or not. And then actually, technically, what does e to the x look like? Exponential growth. So then if this is e to the x, then either the negative x would just be exponential decay. So look at the picture, is it concave up or concave down? Either way, it's concave up, then how would my trapezoids compare? It would be over. And what I do when I think about it is I just do one big trapezoid. Whoop, you see it's stupid. So the more pieces you cut it up into, the harder it is to see the error. So just do one big giant piece. Either way, you skin it, if it's concave up, your trapezoid's gonna be 2. Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to put the negative. No. Yeah, ln x is like this. And then remember the relationship, e goes through 0, 1, and ln goes through 1, 0 compared at first. So they're like flipped across the diagonal. Okay, overall makes sense? Okay, try the next. Okay, try the next one. This was actually on your test. When we talked about this, um, but see if you could figure it out. So it says, look at your graph of f, you can observe some different features. Okay, then it says, which would have the least value? So for each one, I want you to put over or underestimate. You can look back at your charts if you need. Okay, so let's start with left. Over or under? Okay, left is gonna be over. Cut it in half, draw the pieces. You can see this is over. Okay, next one we're gonna do is right, cut it in half. How are the pieces gonna compare? Okay, so a left is over, a right is under. Over. What about a trap? It is also under. Okay, and then what's the next one that we want? Oh, midpoint? What's midpoint gonna be? The most accurate, right? We don't know if it's over, under, but we know it's the closest. And which one is perfectly accurate? Okay, okay, this is the exact area. Okay, and then we know this one is really close. So if I'm looking for the one that has the least value. Would I want the one that's an overestimate? If I want it to be the least value, I want the smallest number, then I don't want the over, which is the left. So then out of the two that are left. This one and this one, which one is gonna be smaller? Which one will have the area be smaller? Which one did you say? Yeah, see, and think about, think about it like this. Which one do the areas that you drew? Which one is closer to the real area? The trapezoid, then this one is missing. So maybe like the area of this one's eight, the area of this one's ten, but maybe the real area's eleven. But the point is that you're gonna miss a lot more area here, so the number's gonna come out to be this small. Does that make sense? The, the estimation of the area using the rectangle. So then you're estimating how big your rectangle will come out. And you want the one that's gonna have the least value. Okay, I'm gonna give you one more like that, that I want you to try, that's the very back. Okay, so flip back to. This one. It'll give you a minute to think about it. Okay, it says, a trapezoidal sum over approximates. And a right Riemann sum under approximates. Which one could be the graph? Which one could be the graph? Yeah, tell me. D? Okay, let's see, I want my trapezoid to be over. So if I slice that in, I'm just gonna do two pieces. It does come out over, even though it's just by a little bit. And then I wanna right Riemann sum to be under. So if I draw my right Riemann sum in. Right side, right side, does it come out under? No, so the concavity was right, how do I want the concavity up or down? I want it to be concave up. But if it's an increasing function. Then my right side is always gonna cut across to half. So if I wanted to under approximate, what do I want it to be? Not increasing, but. So which one would we want then? And now, draw it in and check, right? If I do my trapezoids, I can see that they're too big. Just like they wanted. And then if I draw in my right side Riemann sums, I can see that they're gonna cut under and cut up. So that would be decreasing and concave up. Overall makes sense? Okay, two more things left to cover. When you're ready, turn back to this page right here. Okay, we have two main things that this is gonna come up for. Um, on the AP test, one of them is if you're looking for fundamental theorem version B. So take a look at your part B here. Okay, so in the, actually, let's write what it is, so you remember. F of B. Is F of A. Plus the integral from A to B cubed. Okay, and remember that comes from, you don't have to write this, but just watch, that comes from this. That the integral of F is capital F of B minus capital F of A. The only difference is in version B, I bring my F of A that's finest across to the front. So these are really the exact same thing. This one is just solved, so that if I'm looking for F of B. And I have F of A, then I can solve. So go down to letter B, and now we're gonna modify this to fit position and velocity and acceleration. Okay, so look what it says. The velocity at zero is eleven feet per second. The velocity at zero is eleven feet per second. Find the approximate value of the velocity at six. That's what I want. Well, what do I have? I want the velocity at six, but I already had the velocity with. At zero, and then I'm just gonna integrate from zero to six. Now. Think about, if these are my capital F. I'm supposed to have little f in here, which is the derivative. Then if these are velocities, what should go in here? It starts with an A. Acceleration. Yeah, because think about, how do I go from acceleration to velocity? I take the antiderivative. How do I go from little f to big F? Antiderivative, so it's the same thing. Okay, and now look what it says. Says, use a left Riemann sum with three subintervals in the degree table. Okay, well then that's gonna tell me how to do this part. For this part, I'm gonna do a left Riemann sum. And then what's v of zero? Eleven, so I'll do eleven plus, and then I'll just set up. Delta x, look at your table, is it changing or the same? Zero to two to four to six. Same, so then I can pull the delta x out. And then if it's a left Riemann sum, who are we skipping first or last? Left, you skip the. Last one, because you wanna keep the first one, because it's the left. So then I would pick, remember, you're adding your y values. So it would be three, then four, then six. Okay, but seven would never get. So I'd do three, then four, then six. Four and six makes ten, add three more, that's thirteen. So I have eleven plus double thirteen. Two times thirteen is twenty-six, add eleven to that, what would we get? So remember, if they give you the derivative and they're asking you for capital F. In this case, they gave you acceleration, they're asking you to go back to velocity. That's an integral, but you would just use your version. Okay? Um, alright, then the one other thing, a lot of times that they'll use this on is average value. Okay, so remember, average value is just a form. Okay, so up here at the top, the average y value. Is one over b minus a. And then integral a to b. Now, the one thing that can help you find, remember, there are two types of averages. There's average rate of change. And average y value. It's average y value, if they're asking you to find the average of what you already have. So for example, what's in the chart here? And what do I want the average of? Acceleration. So then think about, this is an average y value, because that's already what I have here. So then I would do one over b minus a. Integral a to b. And then if it's a chart question, they have to tell you what type of Riemann sums. Or trapezoidal sum, but they have to give you instructions, there are four types, right? So then it says, using a trapezoidal sum with the three subintervals. So I'm gonna do one over b minus a. What's my b minus a gonna be? Yeah, so my integral here is zero to six, so I do one over six minus zero. And then integral zero to six of something. And that's gonna tell me the average. Acceleration over zero to six. So what's the number in the front gonna come out to be? What fraction? One sixth. And then I'm ready to do my trapezoidal stuff. So remember, trapezoidal sum is gonna be one half delta x. What's my delta x? What's the spacing on the x-axis? Zero to two, two to four, four to six, it's two. And then remember, with your y values, since I'm doing the short version, I have to double all the middle ones. So for example, three only gets counted once. But then I would double four. Double six, do I double seven? Because the first and the last one only gets to be the end of a trapezoid one. Then from there, that would be twelve plus eight is twenty. Three and ten make another, or three and seven make another ten, so that'd be thirty. So then I have a six of half and two cross out. What's a six to thirty? That would be twelve five. Okay, and then think about, if it's average acceleration, that would still be in meters per second. Um, I forgot to write this, but what would our unit have been in part B if it was velocity? Meters per second. So remember, acceleration is meters per second squared. But velocity would have just been meters per second. Say that again? It says speed. Oh, sorry, okay. Which really, I just made a mistake. They're not gonna like make you convert from here to B. Well, so they told us right here, so you can evaluate the integral with the calculator. You can use a Riemann sum, you can use a trapezoidal sum, but they told you to do a trapezoid. If they had told me to do a Riemann sum. Then I wouldn't have done this formula, I would have taken the one half out and just done delta x. And then done the y values and skipped the last. So it just depends what instruction they give you, but I used a trapezoid along this. Because they told me. And you have to just follow whatever. Okay, overall makes sense? Alright, um. Okay, last one, we're just gonna set it up, but we won't actually do it, go to this one. Okay, what is in the chart on this free response? What unit? Gallons per minute, and then it tells you it's gallons per minute flowing into a tank. Okay, it says that right here. Then how do I find? The number of gallons if they gave me gallons per minute? Do I do a derivative or an antiderivative? So let me ask one more time, this is gallons per minute. I wanna go. Down to gallons per minute squared. Or I could go up to just down. Not a derivative m. Antiderivative is up. So then I would say, okay, well then I wanna integrate from two to eleven. Of my RFT. And then from there, they have to tell me what to use, so skin through the problem. What method do they tell me to use? Yeah, right, Riemann sum, very good. Okay, so then I would work that out, blah, blah, blah. And then the answer's here, but it's the wrong answer, here's why. Go back and look at the beginning, this would tell you. The number of gallons. That flowed into the tank. But what else would you have to remember to add if you wanna know how much water is there? How much is already in the tank originally from that beginning? Thirty-five. So let's say this adds up to a hundred, well then if a hundred new gallons came in, you can't forget that were already thirty-five. So what you would have to remember to do is the original thirty-five plus. And then you would do your right Riemann sum from the table. Does that make sense? So just make sure that you think about, if stuff was already there, you still have to include it. You're taking all the new gallons, but there were already some. Okay, uh, it's five nineteen, so you have your form, I'm happy to sign off on it. And reject. So remember that if it's up, let's say this is feet. The derivative is feet per second. And then the next derivative is feet per second squared. Do you remember that from derivatives? Derivatives are down, and then antiderivative. So if you look right here, it says, what is the approximate number of gallons? So if they gave me gallons per minute, and I'm trying to go back to gallons. Then I need to undo the per minute, which means you need to undo one of the derivatives with an antiderivative. Does that make sense? But it'll be the last week. Because if you do your five study sessions, then you don't even have to show up. I don't know how other teachers are doing that, but I.
When did you, did you move one of the first?
Yeah, I moved it to tomorrow, because remember, I was sick that day. I was sick. From the beginning, so like, were you there last time when we did the graphs of F prime? That was from last semester. Oh, yeah, so then we'll try to hit. Everything, but it'll be a mix of some of it's older than, and some of it's. Yep, and the one term for tomorrow is limits, which is like the first.
I'm gonna do some like. I'll be.
Um, I'm put here, I'll just, I'll. Um, I'm put here, I'll just, I'll show you on here, let me just send this. So if you go on to the web.